It is seven o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our mayor Joel is going to be late. He's got a memorial service and we have others remote, so. A meeting in order and roll call.
Councilwoman.
Here.
Councilor Perser.
Here.
Councilor Williams.
Here.
Councilor Cry. Councilor Cry is excused absent. Councilor Miller.
Here.
And Councilor O'Brien.
Here.
For the record, Councilor O'Brien is appearing virtually.
All right. Thank you. Next, we're going to do a moment of silence where everybody can take a moment to gather their thoughts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask everybody to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
All right. Next. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, but there is a correction to a consent agenda item, Resolution Number 2022-12. The resolution in the cover sheet had the wrong dates on them, so right before the meeting, I did correct them and upload the agenda in the packet to the website.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to jump into Proclamations and Presentations.
We have. Mayor Protem. To adopt the agenda.
I move, we approve the agenda.
For a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Bremen.
Yes.
Councilor Perser.
Yes.
Councilor Williams.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
I warned you, this may be a rough go tonight, so bear with me. All right, now we're going to head into the Proclamations and Presentations. Our first proclamation. Amy, I believe you've got Juneteenth Day.
Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and a half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the abolition of slavery and the emancipation of African American slaves in the United States and continues to grow within communities throughout the country, including Mesa County. And whereas there are organizations in the Grand Valley, such as Black Citizens and Friends, promoting and cultivating knowledge and appreciation of African American history and culture, while encouraging equity and respect for all people and cultures. And whereas the city of Fruta is an inclusive community that encourages a diversity of cultural opportunities. And whereas Black Citizens and Friends is hosting a Juneteenth celebration on Sunday, June 19th, 2022, at Lincoln Park from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Therefore, we, the Fruta City Council, declare Sunday, June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Fruta, Colorado, acknowledging its significance and encouraging our community to join in the celebration of African American history. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal. Okay, I didn't have.
All right, thank you. And David, I believe you're here to accept the proclamation. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm David Combs with Black Citizens and Friends. And the first thing I'd like you to do is thank you for the acknowledgement. A lot of people, especially in these, these political times, believe that a municipality making attempts like this is just an attempt at wokeness. But put it in this perspective, imagine one day waking up and you find out that you've been freed as a slave. However, you were freed two years ago. So you talk in terms of wokeness. You put that in perspective. And what we're trying to do is nothing more than make people aware. And it's not awakening anyone. It's not waking anyone up. It's more along the lines of simply making them aware of other people's tragedies and the good things that have come out of these tragedies. And one of the things that we're doing with this tragedy is creating the celebration. This is the third year that we've done it. Last year was a great year because it was made a national holiday. And so we're very appreciative of Fruta and not just the town council, but all of Fruta. And one of the, one of the guises of that appreciation is a lot of people may not realize that at one time, Fruta was considered a sundown town. And what that means is if you were a person of color, you had to be off the city streets by sundown. And a lot of people believe that, well, that could not have happened, one, in Fruta, two, on the Western Slope. But, but it does. So, and all we're trying to do is just bring, bring things like that to the forefront. We don't want people to dwell on that. We want them to move forward. Thus, our Juneteenth celebration. So we want to thank you. We also are inviting you to read this proclamation at our celebratory function on the 19th of June. Now, our challenge with that is it's also Father's Day. And so what we're doing is we're combining Juneteenth with Father's Day. My wife kind of, she looked at me with a raised eyebrow when I said, "Honey, guess what we're doing?" She says, "No, you're not supposed to be the one that decides what we do on Father's Day. We decide what we're going to do for you." And I said, "Well, guess what we all are doing?" So even our, even our committee, we had some challenges in terms of, okay, so is this going to occur on Sunday's Father's Day or should we do it on Saturday? And I said, "You know, the day is a day. Christmas comes on Sunday. You celebrate Christmas on Sunday. Christmas comes on Monday. You celebrate it on Monday. Fourth of July comes middle of the week. You're taking off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday." So we, we sincerely want to thank you for this. One of the things that we've come to realize is Fruta has always been in the forefront. And it's, it's pretty humbling. And the reason why I say that is because I used to live in Fruta. When I first moved to the Western Slope, I lived on East Carolina. And I thought, what a, what a nice quaint town, you know, and it, and it can't get any better than that. But over like the last, and that was 1980. But over the last 40 years, I mean, things have happened in Fruta. I now live in Clifton. And what we're trying to do in Clifton is mirror what is going on in Fruta. Our biggest challenge is probably, do we have the tax base to become a municipality? Or will we just continue to hang on Mesa County? You want to adopt a town? But anyway, I just really, I sincerely want to thank you for this. It's, it's, it's a feather in our cap, basically.
We were enjoying that.
I know.
We have a moment of public participation coming up. I don't think that's a discussion for the city council at this moment in time. So we can all relax. Joel is back. We have our second proclamation, Joel, if you want to.
Thank you, everyone. Our next proclamation is proclaiming June 2022 as Pride Month in the city of Fruta. And we've got Jared Proch now here to accept that. And Janine's going to be reading that for us.
Whereas the city of the Fruta recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender questioning and all other persons who identify under the LGBTQ plus umbrella as LGBTQ Awareness Month. And whereas the rainbow flag is recognized as the symbol of LGBTQ plus pride, inclusion, equality, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ plus people. And whereas all human beings are born equal and free in rights and dignity, LGBTQ plus individuals have had an immeasurable impact to the civic, cultural, and economic success of our country. And whereas the city of Fruta is committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ plus people in our diverse community. And whereas it is essential to acknowledge that the need for the continued education and awareness will remain vital and indiscrimination and prejudice. And whereas the nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and the city of Fruta, Colorado calls upon, sorry, calls upon the people of its municipality to embrace the principle and work to eliminate prejudice and discrimination everywhere it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Awareness Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Fruta's LGBTQ plus community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance in the community, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fruta hereby proclaims the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ Awareness Month in support of LGBTQ community.
Thank you, Janine. Jared, would you like to say a few words?
You'll have to forgive me because I'm still getting over being sick, so I don't have much of a voice. But Mr. Mayor and council members, we thank you so much for this opportunity to have this proclamation read, but also to have this representation. The LGBTQ community is a growing community within the valley, but also across the nation. So it's really important for members of the community to see this representation with city council and our city leadership. But more than that, it's important for our kids to see that as well. I have six kids at home, and it's very important to see that representation and to see the, the leadership welcoming someone like myself in the community. A lot of what you read talks about inclusion and just kind of wanting to be a part of the community. And that's all that we've really ever wanted. So it's very important to be here tonight and to accept this. And I thank you so much for the opportunity. So does my community and Colorado West Pride. Thank you.
All right. And then the third presentation we have tonight is TMDL update. And we've got our Public Works Director Kimberly Bullen here to present on that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director. I'm just going to do a quick introduction for Carrie Gudorf with Mesa County. She's the Regulatory Programs Manager. We have been before you in the past to talk about TMDLs with new council members. We'd like to give an update as well as provide all of council with some recent activity that we've had with the TMDLs. So I'll turn it over to Carrie.
Hi, thank you and welcome, new council members. I'm going to immerse you in the fun world of TMDLs. And like Kimberly said, Carrie Gudorf, Mesa County Regulatory Programs Manager. And TMDLs is one of the fun things that I get to do. So I don't think what we've done before is kind of given a brief overview of what a TMDL is. TMDL stands for Total Maximum Daily Load. Stream segments in Colorado get listed on what's called a 303D list. That's when the state knows that a stream segment is impaired. And that's throughout the state of Colorado. And Mesa County has many stream segments that are impaired with different nutrients, phosphorus, metals, selenium is a big one, and E. coli. And so a TMDL, what it does is essentially it's a pie and it gives an allocation to amount of stream pollutants that can, that a stream can receive and still meet water quality standards. So in that TMDL, what they do is they identify the sources of pollutants contributing to the water quality standards, which could include point sources, which is your MS4 or industrial facilities, your non-point sources, which is going to be your agriculture. And then you have your background loading. So we all want clean water. It's all really important to us. But the expense that the CDPHD is putting on us is not going to be well received. Oh. And so again, this is just a little schematic of what a TMDL is. You've got your stream segment. You've got your non-point source load in the lower left, which is your agriculture. You got your wasteload allocation, which also can be, I heard you guys went to the fun world of a waste facility today. So those will have a load allocation. Your MS4 will have a load allocation. And then we have a couple of industrial facilities. There's a ruddy ice make that has an industrial facility, and there's a few other ones. The chicken farm doesn't have one. And then you have your background loads. So what the state does is they give an allocation. Again, like I said, it's a piece of a pie. They go through a mathematical calculation of how much they want to load to each source. And then you've got the opportunity to reduce those loads. Agriculture is not permitted, permitted. So the only ones that have reductions are going to be the municipalities and the industrial permit facilities. So a lot of the burden gets put on the MS4 because we are one of the permit holders.
Here. A few people online are having a little difficulty here, if you want to just lean into the mic. Thank you.
And so clean water is really important to us, right? We've got the native fish that's in the upper left. We have our peaches, which we love. And my dog in the far side, she loves the water. She loves going out and playing. The kids love swimming in it. We all love paddle boarding, swimming. Our tomatoes and our crop and our agriculture are a way of life. So we know water quality is important. We all want it. We all want to recreate in it. And we all, we all need it for our quality of life. However, with the state's approach, we don't agree with the way that they're approaching it. And the effect is going to be on our community. There's going to be a huge economic responsibility on us for sampling and different monitoring and reports and standards that we have to be able to meet. And it's also going to be an impact on our development community as well. Next slide. So, and I'm sorry, this is a repeat for the past council members, but I'll go through this really quick. But so our first TMDL was issued August of last year. We submitted a notice of appeal in September. And then the TMDL got placed on hold by the CDPHD in December of 2021. They said, "We want to revisit it. We think we're going to come up with better ideas to reduce your loading for the MS4, and we're going to come back to you." So in January of 2022, they came back to us with a technical memo. And they gave us a revised analysis. And what they did was they did some geospatial data set. And they looked at the land uses and then, because all the agriculture streams run north to south and the canals run east to west, and so everything is intercepted. But we have mixtures of residential and agriculture, residential and agriculture. And so it's hard because the MS4, a lot of the time, discharged back into the canal systems. And so we're like, well, that should be agriculture. But that's not the way that the CDPHD sees it. And so USGS did an extensive data set and looked at the unlined ditches, which we believe are a significant driver in the TMDL because of the groundwater and the selenium that it's driving up. And then they use different methodology. And they thought that it would decrease the MS4, which it did. It decreased the MS4 during agriculture season because with water, you've got, you know, the more water, the less pollutants you're going to have. But then, non-irrigation season, our levels spike, and we have a huge reduction standard that we have to meet in the winter. And we're like, well, where we're gaining our groundwater and seepage is in the winter because all of that return flow is coming. And the less water that's in our streams and ditches is during agriculture season. So we, we don't think that it makes sense on a data level scientifically. And then they also gave us a buffer zone of 200 feet. They said groundwater is only going to go 200 feet beyond these ditches. And we're like, well, that's not really the way groundwater works, but nice try. So next slide. So they came out with a draft number two in February. And we submitted comments. They gave us 30 days. Give us, here's 30 days. Give us your comments. So we're scrambling to review, do comments. It's not a small report. It's like 150 something pages. It's technical. It's all scientific data. And so by March 17th, we had 30 days to give them comments and review. They don't have a timeframe to get us back a review on our comments. And so it's now June 7th, and I'm patiently waiting for the next TMDL to come out, their new draft. So like I said, in all of these, we have SGM, which is our engineer. And she does water and water quality. She works really close with USGS. And then, and she knows how to look at the data and what we need to look at. We had NSW, which is our legal team. They specialize in water and water quality. And then we had Winfield, which is a hydraulic, hydrologic review on our TMDL. So why are we doing this? Is because once this TMDL is in place, you can't get it removed. You always have a wasteload allocation on our MS4. And so we're spending money now, but this is a really small amount of money that we're going to be spending. I'm talking, and this was numbers from 2007, 2008, were about $1 million a year, just in water quality. Well, now it's 2022. We have inflation. I don't know what those numbers are going to be. And yeah, we've got it split between Grand Junction and Mesa County and Fruta. And we've got two non-standard partners too on our team. But the cost is going to be significant, and the expectation on our MS4 permit is going to be big. Oh, and Mesa County holds the MS4, the municipal separate stormwater permit for Fruta, Palisade, Grand Junction, and then the two non-standard partners. So that's why I keep saying MS4. And this is why this is a we thing. So, okay. Next line. So like, oh. We did Angie Fowler with SGM wrote, and I'm sorry, this is really, it's not the most entertaining slides. They got a 319 grant through Grand Valley Drainage District. And what that did was it was a watershed management plan. And those watershed management plans makes it possible for grant dollars in our valley. So we can do things like water sampling. We can have projects that we can work on, like canal lining projects. And it makes that money available in our community. So it was only for non-point sources. That's what the grant is intended for and what the plan is intended for. But it will help us also in the community, so funding it can be available. So originally, the budget was $50,000 with NSW. And as you can see from the timeline, we're a year from when they initiated our TMDLs. And so we spent that money because we had a lot of reviews and a lot of different drafts and a lot of CDPHD keep coming, kept coming back to us. So Mesa County took care of the first $25,000. And then we did a split of 65% to city of Grand Junction. Fruta had 24%, and then Grand Valley Water Users in the school district each participated with 5%. And then if you want to go to the next slide. And because we spent that, which I feel like it was good allocation of funds, we, I came back to the drawing board and I said, "Well, Mesa County needs to come back into the picture because now that we've spent our first chunk, we need to come back in." So Mesa County and city of Grand Junction are going to be at 40. City of Grand, or city of Fruta is going to drop down to 10%. And then Grand Valley Water Users in the school district is going to be still at 5. So like I said, comments were submitted. We're waiting. The Water Quality Control Division, Nicole Rowland and Tricia and Barbara Bennett all came out for a tour. We loaded all up in a 10 or 12 passenger van. And we all went for a drive on the Grand Valley, and we showed them the canals. And we showed them seep and that water in these canals were contributors to the streams and the water flow in these stream segments. And then once all these canals are aligned or piped, we're not really going to have that much water that's going to be in our stream segments. But they didn't really seem to understand. And so I wrote Nicole Rowland about three weeks ago and said, "I really need to meet with you guys again." And she said, "We need to meet again. We totally agree." And I, I'm waiting for when we're going to schedule a meeting. So I'm trying to be as patient as possible to see what the CDPHD is going to come back with. So that tour was not as positive and helpful as I thought it was going to be with showing them exactly what we are looking at here in the Grand Valley. If our comments are not addressed, they're not going to go back out to public comment. And so within 30 days, if we don't submit an appeal by going, taking them to water court, then they're going to finalize the TMDL. And then they'll send it off to the EPA. The EPA will check mark it within 30 days. And then we have a TMDL in place. So we could have a TMDL in place by August, which is funny. It's going to be a whole year of fighting this. But I think we need to continue the fight of what we're doing and staying on the front end of this. Okay, any questions?
You don't have a slide that says questions, so.
Sorry.
Does anybody have any questions for Carrie? Go ahead, Matthew.
I do. Couple of questions. Have they at all considered water comes in from outside of Mesa County as being a contributor to like the selenium and any of that?
Well, and that's what we told them. We said, we're, we took them up to where Grand Valley Water Users ditch comes off of the Colorado. We said, "We're pulling this from the Colorado River. We're irrigating our farms with it. We're irrigating our lands with it, or even our subdivisions, our parks, and then it's going back into the Colorado River." Oh, and one thing I need to mention is we have selenium in the majority of our stream segments, iron, and then E. coli in two of our stream segments. And we said, we drove them by the two stream segments that are impaired for E. coli. And we said, "Most likely, it's probably agriculture or wildlife." And they said, "Well, kids have the potential to swim in these drainages." And I said, "Did you see the tamrisk in Russian Olive?" And they said, "Kids have the potential." Sure, I did too when I was a kid, but that's what kids do. So they want to minimize that people could possibly get sick, so.
The other question is, assuming this happens, it goes to the EPA. They put their checkmark on it. Is there a timeline for compliance?
So.
Then if, what is the timeline? And are there penalties in the interim?
There's no penalties, but it's going to be, so the MS4 COR 90,000, if you want to go into some really great reading, that's, they're rewriting our stormwater permit. And that's statewide right now, but people like Cherry Creek and Arvada that have TMDLs right now. and Arvada that have TMDLs right now in the Bear Creek watershed, their MS four permits are just written into that permit. So that permit is expired. They're doing us a favor and rewriting that again. So I have some more work to do. And then that will give us limits and what we have to do. That will tell us when we need a sample. And we, and that was the hardest thing with the CDPH is we've said, well, what is this going to look like? And they're like, well, we don't know yet. And I'm like, well, how can you not know? I need to know. If you're going to put this on us, I need to know what this is going to equal and what it's going to mean. So as soon as I get my permit, then we're going to know a little bit more about what it's going to entail. As far as I know, it's going to be more of documenting, reporting when we're sampling as outlined in their permit. And then any projects that we're doing that can help contribute to reductions or, and the water sampling that we're doing. And then it's just going to be yearly submitting a report. I don't, as far as I know, think that they have a regulatory mechanism that is going to, if, if we say we're trying, we're trying, and if we submit this report, but I don't know entirely what that's going to look like.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Carrie. All right. With that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issue and will not take an official action under this section. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? You'd please step up and state your name and address for the record. And then we ask you, please limit your comment to three minutes.
My name is Wendy Wood. I'm a resident of Fruta, Colorado. Is that sufficient for the address? Do I need to put the street in? Okay, 1891 J and 6th Road. I'm actually here for a couple of reasons. I wanted to first let you know about a community event that's coming up. Mike O'Donnell, who's running for Colorado Secretary of State. We have a meet and greet scheduled locally in Fruta, Sunday afternoon from five to seven or evening from five to 7:00 PM. If you are interested in attending that event, please private message me on Facebook. I'm Wendy Wood. And Wendy with an I at the end. Anyway, and I can get you the address. Additionally, he will be appearing on Monday at AL House from four to 5:30 and then at Stand for the Constitution at 6:30 later that evening at Appleton Christian Church. Just a man that, that cares about our country. He's about our state. He's a man of integrity, honesty. He has boosted our economy with small business loans. And yeah, he's just a, just a good guy that has shown to be a very honest person. Additionally, I wanted to, I just love Fruta and I came to bless you guys and just thank God for this great city council. And I'm going to go ahead and pray. So Father, I just thank you for this time together. I thank you again that you are causing these leaders here to walk in wisdom and discernment for giving them just a, a great understanding and care for one another and for the city. I thank you that they would walk in wise counsel, that every decision they make would be, would be met with just thoughtful consideration for all parties involved and would be led of your spirit. I thank you that, that you would bless Fruta because of their leadership and bless their lives, bless their families, protect them. And I just thank you that you are causing Fruta to flourish and prosper, even when the rest of the nation might be in a recession or or going through hard times. I know that your hand is on this place and I thank you for that favor. In your name, Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? We don't have anybody online, do we? All right. With that, we're going to close public participation and we're going to move into our consent agenda. So the consent agenda, these are items where all conditions or requirements been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. They all will be approved by one single motion of the council. So with that, I'm going to open up the consent agenda to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on something on the consent agenda? You seen anybody online?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We're going to close that for public comment, bring it back to council. Are there any questions or do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda that was emailed out this afternoon, I believe.
Oh, that was Heather. Sorry about that. Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breban?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our public hearings. We've got one quasi judicial hearing tonight. It's a special event liquor permit application. And we've got our deputy city clerk Deb Woods here to present on that.
You. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk, presenting a special event liquor permit application from the Colorado Riverfront Foundation to sell wine and beer at the 2022 Summer Concert Series. In the past, the Riverfront Foundation has had three concerts as part of their summer concert series. But Mr. Nelson told me at the beginning of the meeting, before it started, that this year actually, instead of having three so-so concerts, they're going to have two really good ones. We're looking forward to that. The Colorado Riverfront Foundation has submitted the fee and all the necessary paperwork to be issued a special event liquor permit. A diagram of the proposed licensed premises consists of a fenced in area at the state park. And security will be provided by event staff, park staff, and private security. The staff is experienced and many are tips trained and will be checking IDs. And the Riverfront Foundation and their narrative state that it is worth noting that their events typically play to an older demographic with an average age of 45. Fruta Chief of Police Dave Kraus in his memo stated that he did not have any concerns about the application, that nothing would prohibit the issuance of it. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council approve the special event liquor permit subject to three conditions. One, alcohol will just continue being served at 9:30, allowing patrons 30 minutes to finish their beverages and leave the licensed area. Number two, the licensee needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of licensed premises. And number three, all other procedures presented by the Colorado Riverfront Foundation will be followed. So my recommended motion would just be to approve the application subject to all the conditions stated by staff. And that concludes my presentation. Ron Wilson, owner of Sandstone Concerts, and Paul Nelson, Chair of the Colorado Riverfront Foundation, are present this evening as the applicant's representatives. So I'll turn it over to them for any additional comments they may have or any questions the council may have.
Hi, I'm the Ron part of that. Paul Nelson sitting here. So open any questions that you may have. We are in probably our 20th year or so over there. Now, hopefully didn't offend anyone with the older demographics. But we do find that that's an easier crowd to work with. And we'll just leave it at that.
All right, Ron. Well, what we do normally is before we ask questions, we open it up for public comment and then we'll come back. And if any council has any questions for you, if there's nothing else you want to add to your comments.
Pardon me?
You don't want to add anything else to your comments?
No.
Or what dates you've got that you're coming?
So the two events this year are Friday, August 12th and Friday, September 9th. It's a very busy year, the live music business. I think Mesa County, Grand Junction is seeing more activity in the concert world than they've ever seen. I've been here doing this for 40 years and I've never seen anything like what we're seeing this summer. It's just packed. And a lot of that is COVID holdover events that are being now able to complete. They were canceled or postponed in 2020, 2021, and now they're all coming back in 2022. So it's a very busy, very busy summer out there. And we're kind of thankful that we're at the tail end of it in some respects because right now it's you're seeing two or three shows at the amphitheater a week.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to open up the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, you seen any online?
None, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, we're going to bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the application for special events liquor permit for the Colorado Riverfront Foundation Incorporated to sell alcohol beverages during the summer 2022 concert series at the James M. Robb Colorado River State Park, subject to the conditions presented by staff.
A second.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breban?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Thank you, Ron and Paul. You're all set.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
All right. With that, we're going to move into our administrative agenda. Our first item is a presentation on the 2022 capital projects and pending grant application. We've got our assistant, the city manager, Shannon Vass, in here to present.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council for the opportunity to present tonight. Yeah, Sam Atkins and I, our city engineer, will be covering current and pending grant applications as well as 2022 capital projects that are included in the budget. Today's actually a perfect day to present this because we just got really good news on two of these projects that I'll cover in this presentation. But you've probably seen a lot of this information, so we'll kind of run through it really quickly. But as always.
How many slides are up there?
The number is not important, Mr. Mayor. We.
Two presentations in one.
If you divide by the two, never mind. So these are in no order at all. So I just kind of put them. So we'll start off with a current and pending grant application. So as Mike announced our last meeting, we were just recently awarded 1.7 million dollars from the Carow Department of Transportation's revitalizing Main Street program for improvements to South Mesa Street. This design was completed after we adopted, the council adopted the Fruta Downtown Streetscape Improvement Plan several years ago. A couple of years after that, they completed the improvements on Aspen Street. And now this is the next phase of that project in making these improvements to South Mesa Street. So as you can see, and you've probably seen this in, in previous presentations as well, the improvements include a lot of traffic calming features and also increasing the number of diagonal parking spots, making sure the parking is completely uniform all along South Mesa Street and repairing the road and also replacing about 200 feet of sewer line as well. So we're excited to receive this grant from CDOT and also excited to be able to get this project rolling on through. This is one of the ones we got good news on today. A few, maybe it was last month, we actually submitted for congressional directed spending where we tried to get one of our senators to recommend projects for community projects for funding through the federal appropriations process. And we just heard today that Senator Hickenlooper will be recommending additional $250,000 for this project. It's still a long process to go kind of into that. It has to go to committee and then the federal appropriations bill. But that'd bring us right around to $2 million out of a $2.4 million project. So very encouraging for that. And that'll help us on both the general fund side and the sewer side because there is that sewer component. Moving on, so Reed Park is another capital project that's been identified in the budget. This year, we did apply for the GoCo Resilient Communities Grant early on, I believe it was in March. We weren't selected for that grant, but fortunately, I believe there are three cycles each year. So Mark Mancuso, our Parks and Recreation Director, and now resident grant writer, will be applying for the August cycle for the Resilient Communities Grant through GoCo to help with the, all the improvements needed at Reed Park. As Sam will cover as well, they're also doing some engineering and getting it more ready for construction. So by the time we do apply, maybe that'll show some more readiness on our part when we go through the GoCo process. In addition to that, as I was saying, Mark has been very busy with other grant applications. He applied for $10,000 through the skate park project to help with the in-ground skate park that's part of that design. He also applied for $120,000 through PlayCor to help with the playground equipment at Reed Park. And he also has a similar, but much smaller playground request through PlayCor for a prospector park as well. So definitely wanted to touch upon those.
And if I could add in those PlayCor grant, those have been approved. So we, we also received news on those. They're in the project.
Yeah, we're just awaiting final notification on that.
Seeing both PlayCor ones?
Yeah, they're moving forward. They have to give the final notice, but they've let us know.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's encouraging as well. Another grant that we had out there, Mike Kimberly and I were in Denver two weeks ago presenting to the Department of Local Affairs Energy Impact Assistance Fund Committee. This was one of the grants that we presented on, and this was for the broadband specific DOLA Energy Impact Fund project. This is to help us with that middle mile broadband connection, also create the carrier neutral location at one of our city facilities. That's kind of what the inside of a carrier neutral location looked like if you're ever interested. It's not a lot, a bunch of racks, a bunch of wires and an air conditioning unit in the back. That project has been recommended for funding. So that's encouraging as well. I also, I do apologize, Kimberly. I skipped over the other DOLA grant that we have. Yeah, which Kimberly and Mike also presented on. This is for the H2S mitigation project. I believe we should hear a decision on that within the next couple of weeks. This is to replace several manholes and also several miles of sewer line that has been deteriorating due to H2S gas in the city's sewer system. But I'll let her speak to that more. If you want. Other grants, 2019, council adopted the North Frue Desert Master Plan, which calls for 32 miles of new trail at 18 Road. Out of that 32 miles, about 18 is professional built and the remaining can be built by volunteers and also crews. So we have been successful in getting two grants for the North Frue Desert, one from the Carow Tourism Office, where we'll hire a youth conservation corps crew to build, to build about three to four miles of new green level single track trail out there. And last year, we were also awarded a grant through Gray Outdoors Colorado for a very similar project to build another three to four miles. So this group will be focusing on beginner level trails and really trying to spread people out of the trails that are used often to help with the experience. And of course, cut down on the amount of damage and use to the existing trails. EV charging stations in the, in the budget this year, we do have set aside $125,000 to install two 62.5 kilowatt charging stations. They charge electric vehicles in roughly 45 minutes to an hour. Really excited about this project because we don't have any here in Fruta minus the one that was just installed at Dinosaur Journey. So we think that installing these two fast chargers on, in downtown will encourage EV owners to stop when they get off the interstate, when they get off the dinosaur diamond highway and shop in our downtown businesses while they're letting their car charge. So we were awarded $70,000 from the Caro Energy Office to help offset the cost of the charging stations. The two charging stations roughly cost about $100,000. So the Caro Energy Office will cover $70,000 of that. And today we also received word that XL Energy will be putting in all the electrical work needed and they'll cover all the costs as well. So we may need another transformer out there to make sure we have enough power. They did talk about maybe another pole out there on the north side parking lot. They're not sure if we're going to need that. We just learned today that they'll cover all of that. So out of that 125, we might get away with just spending 30 to 50,000 on this project. So very excited to see that.
Where are we looking at putting this in?
They're going to be in the north parking spots mostly because it's closest to the electrical that we need for, for the station.
And that's a 90/10 split on revenue?
Or, oh, yep, yep. The vendor, the, the vendor that we're going to purchase through, and thanks for bringing that up, Matthew, because I actually think we're getting a great deal on the charging stations. We're piggybacking off the state of Colorado's purchasing. So they have agreements in place with all of these vendors that actually reduce the cost significantly if you buy off of their purchase order. So we're actually probably saving about $10,000 per just by doing that on the vendor we've selected to order from. Yeah, we get about 90% of the revenue and then 10% is set aside for the vendor just for processing administrative fees, stuff like that. We hope that the revenue will offset the cost to, we use to actually use the stations or people use to use the stations. But XL Energy is supportive of this project. They actually will bill us a special rate just for the station. So we know how much is being used and we can kind of track that. And hopefully they'll offset the cost of the increase of electrical from it. So that's encouraging. A couple of other very small ones. We talked about a commuting garden. I don't know why I've said encouraging like four times. So I apologize about that.
Very encouraged.
It's not in my notes, but I don't know. Very quickly, Mark also has a few other grants at the Fruta Community Center. We did apply to build this community garden up here on the south side of the community center for the AARP Community Challenges Grant. We were not selected for that funding, I think, out of 2,400 applications. for the AARP Community Challenges Grant. We were not selected for that funding. I think out of 2,400 applications they received, we got about 60, or they funded about 60, so we weren't selected for that. But he does have another grant pending with the organization Next 50 for that grant funding as well.
That's encouraging.
I agree.
With, with those kind of odds, we might buy lottery tickets.
Seriously. Seriously. What's probably not encouraging, though, is we do have congressional directed spending requests to both Senator Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper for four projects, South Mesa Street, Fremont Street Build, the whole intersection of J Road, South Mesa, or the Maple Street Bridge, and also the Pine Street Bridge. So we haven't heard on those yet. Since we heard from Hickenlooper on one, I'm assuming that probably will be the only one that they're putting through the appropriations process. But we haven't heard from Bennett yet, so we'll see. But yeah, we submitted for four projects, didn't have a lot of expectations on whether or not any of them will be funded. So if we get anything from the federal process, that is good. But we'll see. But since we haven't heard from Bennett's office, I would imagine maybe that isn't something that he's gonna put forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Sam unless you have any questions on pending or recently awarded grants.
Actually, I want to go back to the EV
Absolutely.
Charging.
Yeah.
You said that we probably won't end up using all the funds for that. And while we're looking at putting in the two, is it worthwhile for us to look at maybe doing an extra one or an extra two at this point? Or is it just as easy to move in later and do them if we find out it's a fruitful endeavor?
Yeah, we've talked about that. So the funds that we get from the Cara Energy Office, they are limited to up to $70,000 for the two charging stations. They do recommend best practices, though, like once you have the electrical in, like lay empty conduit down. So if you do have a lot of use, you could put in a future, you can put in charging stations at that same location in the near future, which I think will be probably pretty easy to do. The electric that Excel's putting in, I believe, is 480? 480. So we do have plenty of room to expand. But we'll probably install these two, see how much use they get, and if we need more in the future, we can probably do that as well. You know, they say it's really good sometimes to pair those with a slower one because not everyone needs a charge within 45 minutes to 60 minutes. So I think we'd look at the use of these two and kind of go from there. But
But it'll be easy to grow.
Yeah.
Because in 10 years from now or so, it's gonna be really nice to be able to get ahead of it, right?
Yeah, I would, I would think so. There is a lot of room at that area right now, and the, the power will have the capacity to accommodate future growth. So they're very busy. Great. We can probably install more. We're just losing some employee parking on that, on that side a lot. But it, if it's very busy, we could easily add more in the future.
And we get thrown on those maps and stuff like that because I'm sure, so the
It's automatically updated.
That's great.
And then the two closest chargers would be Green River and Grand Junction.
So this is perfect for, this is perfect for us. This is a great, I really like it.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's gonna be great. We think a lot of people will head downtown while their vehicle's charging. They can do it all. They could do their city business, come to city council meetings, if you're the mayor pro tem. While it's charging.
So, you know.
Why did you do the slower chargers? So they'd stay downtown longer.
We hear these get used more frequently than some of the other chargers.
We plan our trips.
Now, the, the funds that we're, that we're receiving from those, it's gonna be a wash probably. But is there gonna be like a slush fund, for lack of a better term, that we can maybe roll into future?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's less money that we're using out of fund balance. So as you went through the budget, I think we have about $15 million in our capital projects fund that we're using for all these projects. So it's money that can definitely be used in the future. But also, if we have any, if for some reason this project goes over, another project goes over, we can use those savings to maybe offset those costs this budget year. Like we do have a few projects that went over, but some that went under as well. So yeah, we have some flexibility with those funds.
Hate to keep driving nuts on this, but I really like this project.
Yeah, yeah.
What's, what's our expected date of?
So right now, Excel is just finalizing the design. The charging stations take about three months to order. So once I get the design from Excel and don't have any issues with with any of the electrical, like assuming they don't see any hurdles, there is a delay as with a lot of things on
Materials?
Getting transformers.
Okay.
Transformers right now. So if they need one, that could delay it slightly. But we hope that once they get the design, I can order those, and we'll have all the construction work done by the time they arrive, and we can pay someone to install it. So probably three to four months if all goes well. Excel was here a month and a half ago. So I'm not concerned that the design is taking this long. I think they have a lot, but we thought it was gonna be more straightforward. So we just have to get design from them before we can move forward with the purchase order request.
And after that, we can look at how productive it is and then try, I would really like to stay ahead of everybody else on this if you can't tell. That's where I'm I really think it's great that you guys are doing this. I really like it, and it's, I think, for myself, this is a great move forward. It puts us on the map. Oh, no, this, this is phenomenal. This, this gives us, this puts us on the map.
Yeah, yeah.
Really puts us on a map.
James, we're gonna have to trade in his
No, no, Sam already wants one. Don't worry.
No, I think, I think it'd be great. And it's like, we're kind of a desert here as far as electric vehicle charging stations. We're missing all the people that are coming off of I-70, all the people that are, you know, coming off the dinosaur diamond.
We were just out in, in California, and where we were, there was literally one, seven out of 10 cars were Teslas where we were. It's, it's very lucrative. So yeah, please, please keep us up to date on that, for sure.
Will do.
That's great.
Any other questions from council before I turn it over? Yeah, city engineer Sam.
Heather, you're online still. I know.
Very encouraging. Thank you.
I'm good.
Don't want to forget about you, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Looks like Shannon took over all the glorious projects, and we'll start with this one. I think we talked about, we talked about this a little bit at the last presentation, but we have $100,000 that was allocated this year for sidewalk replacements. We try to look at the places that have the worst ADA and offsets and spalling and identify those as the ones that we're gonna do for the year until we get to our budget. We also do some ADA ramps. We have a number of ramps that don't meet current standards now. And so formerly, we had $30,000. We might use 7,500 for ramps and split it, split the rest of it up between the grinding and, and the replacements. But we haven't started this yet. We're still getting the list together. So this is gonna be a fall construction, and it'll be all one project.
Sam, you say you're putting that list together. Is that something that people can put in for? The reason I ask this is I did get accosted, with lack of a better word, by a citizen that was like, my sidewalks. And I was like, you should come to city council. So I'm just curious, is this something that people can break, put to your attention? You say you're looking for a list.
So in the past, yes, that's how we've done it. We would certainly accept someone coming in, and then we would evaluate it to see if it meets the criteria for one. And then where does it fall within the, here's the bad stuff? And so in the past, what we've done is we've said, hey, we'll, we'll take whoever qualifies. But you might have worse conditions elsewhere. And so we are going to decide these are the ones. And, and if we do this, you know, with this type of dollar amount, we'll probably guessing seven to 10 years out of taking care of all the current issues. And so we just weren't kind of catching up. You know, you look around, I mean, look at look in the circle right now. There's a lot of spalling concrete in there, and there's a lot of foot traffic. And, and so try to prioritize maybe around the schools and a little higher trafficked areas. But certainly, it's based on grade. And we went last year and evaluated all the concrete. Basically, it was kind of a, a drive-by evaluation for every segment in the city. And so we're gonna use that as our criteria. Still gotta go make a site visit. It's not gonna be, hey, these are the ones, and these are the fives. And then you get out there, and it's really not that way. So, and, and it's usually not gonna be a full segment. You know, you're not gonna do a whole street section. You're just gonna do the area that's, that's a problem.
So the one, like the picture that was shown, how, how are you working around those tree? Like, that's roots, right, that's causing that?
So Chris got that picture, and it's probably somewhere else in the country.
Okay. So this is not an issue we're seeing.
There's a good example.
There's one out here. There's
We went around.
So, yeah, it kind of depends on where you are. In the middle of town, we don't have the 14-foot multipurpose esements. We have full-on right-of-way, and you have detached walk. So what we've been doing is meandering around in the trees downtown. We haven't, we haven't run against that too much with the areas that have the curb gutter and sidewalk. That's, that's all monolithic. So if we did, we wouldn't be able to go around. We're, we're gonna have to either discuss if that's a problem. We're gonna have to take the tree out or in order to alleviate the, or correct the, the cracking. So that, that's, that can be an issue because the tree can actually be on private property, right? And then the roots are, are the problem. So primarily, we've had that issue because of the mature trees downtown, and we've been able to work around it. I think up by Jesse's house up on Mesa, there's an example where, that's south of Chelity that we went around, may not have stayed in the right-of-way, but that's another point.
This was in Fruta? Like, I don't have an idea of like what that would cost to replace. I don't know if that's like a seven, eight-foot chunk of concrete. Is that a 5,000, 10,000?
So you're, you're probably six bucks, seven bucks a square foot on replacing the concrete. We typically, well, in our standards, we would not allow for a piece of concrete to be replaced that doesn't result in at least a five-foot length stone. So you're not, you don't want to have a bunch of one-foot stones, and then they're gonna, they're gonna start doing the offset as well. But yeah, I would assume that if you were going to replace that, it could be three to four grand. And then that's part of the 80/20. And so then you got 20, you got $800 as, as the resident.
But Sam, if I'm correct, if it was that bad, and the resident can't pay, how do we handle that?
Your finance director has come up with a plan.
Right.
She, her plan is to, basically, you're gonna have a lien on the house and work with us. We work with you. Payment plan, that kind of thing. Because like I said, that's what was happening before. I can't pay that $500, so I'm not going to call you back. I can pay, this one gets replaced, this one doesn't. This one was worse than this one. So that, that is the plan moving forward, and be prepared for the phone calls.
So I know.
We, the finance department has a, a pretty long track record of working with residents. I mean, they've kind of been empowered to just be able to do it without it being a huge process that are behind on payments. And so before people, you know, you hit a certain point where you might receive a call that, hey, the, you know, you water's gonna shut your water off because you're this far behind. But prior to that, and even up to that point, there's a lot of opportunities to work with staff. And, and it's typically, what can you make? And then let's create a plan. And then if they follow through with that, they're able to get through it without getting to those worst-case scenarios. So they've got good experience doing that in other cases, and then similarly with this. But so far, I, I think last year was the, last year was the first year we, we started doing it where we were contacting based on the grade of, you know, there are the ratings of the worst sections in the city. And then this year was the first year we upped that to 100,000. So we have more happening as we send those out. But it, but it went really well last year, honestly.
And well-received.
Yeah.
It's better than forcing them, since they have that responsibility and to say, hey, you gotta fix your sidewalk, so.
It definitely, it definitely can be a surprise to people because it's not one of those things you just naturally think, oh, that's, that's on me. You know, that, that's a public sidewalk, and, and it's been that way for many, many decades, but it's just not something we think about on a regular basis. So I think the approach, the letter, the, the, the way it's written has been thought through really carefully to try not to come across as it's just, you know, kind of just this surprise. And it still has that prudent touch to it, but you could still hear from some people, right? Like we could, it depends on the situation.
That might be a, a good question of the week.
Yeah, yeah.
Just toss it out there. Did you know that you own the sidewalk?
That is a good
You don't own it, but you maintain it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So I know the consultant prepared a presentation last, was it the workshop for this? So you've kind, you've kind of already heard about the North Mary Mulberry Street outdoor space. We went through April, May, got public survey information, that stuff, that was presented to the council. We are moving forward with some conceptual design based on that input. Engineering's kind of looked at both the north and south side, and we'll, you know, we're not doing the work, but we can help the consultant with where to place some of the, we can, we can put some parking in there on the north and south side, and, and how it works with the layout that they come up with. I think we can get maybe six parking stalls in there. And that seemed to be a concern. So going through the conceptual design and getting cost estimates and getting a final design, we're probably looking at three months in that timeframe. We had $50,000 set aside for the design and 450 for the construction.
And if I could, if I could add to that, it's probably a good time, just as an update. Since the last workshop, we did, we did have design workshop. Since our workshop, we had the company design workshop go back through the, the question that came up in the workshop about how much would it cost if we do two concepts versus one construction drawing? So the contract that we have of 50,000 with them is split with a $25,000 grant with Department of Local Affairs, and then 25,000 that we budgeted. And they can do two concept plans or concept designs with the current contract, but it'll, it'll complete the, the, the full amount, right? So if we, if we are, and then to do final design of whatever we would pick would be another 20 to 25,000. So it's kind of, we, we haven't had them start working on the concepts yet. Since the workshop, we did have engineering look into one, just instead of paying them to do it, we could, you know, what is feasible? What could we do from part, a parking standpoint? So what Sam's saying is if it's a full closure, permanent closure, there could be three permanent parking stalls on the north and on the south side of, of the closure, right? In, in a, in a permanent style closure. So we did find that out before we get moving because we, that was a, it was a great idea that came up in the workshop, but wanted to make sure, can we do it with access to the alleys and access to the, you know, with the, the T-intersection south of, on the south side? And, and that looks good. So we're, we're happy about that if we were to move forward. So I think it's, it's a good time, whether it's now or soon, but before we get them working, you know, to do two conceptual, conceptual designs will cost us another 20. Depends on how far the final design goes, but it's gonna be around that 20,000 mark in addition, which would come out of the construction cost. So so getting feedback from the council would be, would be helpful on whether it's now or we schedule a future meeting. But any, any delays is delay in the total project. So, but they came back to us with that one in one, and we just wanted to be, make sure you were aware of what the costs were because that was a question we couldn't answer in the meeting last time.
There's no reappropriation. It just come out of the final construction costs unless we're over budget on construction, correct?
Yeah, that's in our, I mean, we would have to move it to the appropriate part, but yeah, it's, it's it, it just depends on if, if, if you want to go, if you want to go that route with two concepts, or if you want to start designing one way or not with knowing what the costs are. That, that's all we're giving you an update on.
All right. So I, I guess my opinion would be, if everybody's comfortable kind of talking through that now instead of scheduling another whole meeting, because it'd be what, another two weeks? All right. So I guess the question would be, do we want, do we want to spend the 20,000, I guess, extra? That's the first question. If we're saying yes, we're okay with that, then I guess we're gonna move ahead with two concept plans. If we're not okay with that, then we'd have to say, okay, which one of those two plans are we looking at, the permanent or the then we'd have to say, okay, which one of those two plans are we looking at the permanent or the adjust, yeah, seasonal?
The money that we're looking at spending, isn't it all the grant from the grant money anyway? How much of this are we out of our city funds and how much is from a grant?
The four hundred or four hundred and seventy five thousand, when you, when you take in what we budgeted for some construction and then twenty five thousand match for the grant is is our funds and then twenty five thousand is is the grant.
I mean, out of the.
We. Seventy five thousand is out of our budget.
Right.
Out of the city budget that we're building. It wasn't a grant. It wasn't.
The the grant to design and do the engagement was for twenty five thousand to match twenty five thousand to do the that process and and end with construction drawings was the.
Build it. We're spending four hundred and fifty grand of city money to build this.
That's what we have in the budget to go as a placeholder that was that was approved for this year's budget to go towards either construction or try and seek grants to, depending on what what ends up being, right? You know, it depends on the scale of the project. Correct? Yeah.
To clarify why we're talking about it again is because Sam has addressed the parking concern. Is that correct? Because like where we were at the workshop, we said we wanted to see the two concepts.
Right.
Because because of the parking concern. But now Sam is saying that our department has looked at it and feels comfortable saying we could recoup the six that are, or six out of the.
Six out of the eight.
Six of the eight and.
Is that right? That's why you want to.
Yeah, two, two reasons. That's, that's one. The second was during the workshop when we, when you all talked about doing two concepts and asked design workshop, how much extra would that cost? We didn't, you know, they they didn't know that answer yet, but they've given us that now. So just those two new pieces of information.
Those are the two things that we as council said. This is what we want answers for before we make a decision on where we move.
You're looking for like.
I'm sorry. So we're looking for, well, staff has to have direction. So that's two concept plans or one, one.
Which one?
And then which one, if we want to go with one? That's why I'm saying there's the, the first question is do we want, well, I guess they're both intermingled, but do we want to spend an extra twenty thousand dollars on two concept plans? A seasonal or a permanent? And if we don't want to spend that, then which plan would we move forward with to stay within the current budgeted design phase?
And the idea, if we were to come up with two plans, we'd go back out to the public to get feedback on those plans.
So the the difference would be if we went forward, let's say we went forward with one plan, there's going to be stages where there are different arrangements, right? Have these amenities, have these amenities where we get to go back out to the public. The big difference is if 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 they're looking at it would cost a lot of money to do construction drawings, right, for two different things. But to work towards that for one is within the budget, or if we're going to work towards two different concepts. That's why we, we don't want to get them working on, it it changes, you know, it changes the amount of money and it changes the approach that they're taking. But picking one doesn't mean you're picking a final design. It's, it means they're gonna go through a concept for that one. And then they're also going to go through. We're gonna have opportunity for not only council to weigh in, but take it to the community to weigh in on some of those versions of the, it's the difference is a permanent closure or this flexible piece. Because those are, those are far different designs than one another.
Question still is, if we say yes, proceed with the spending the extra money for two different designs, not design drawings, but concept drawings. Is the idea that once we have those two concepts, we'd go back to the public with the two concepts to see if there's a preference?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'm saying is either way, we're going, I think we need to get some feedback on it.
I think that if we're gonna go back to the public either way, it would be nice to have two different ideas so the people can weigh in. If we're gonna spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the people's money on closing a street, I don't think the twenty thousand dollars of that good, looking at all possibilities is asking too much. I mean, I don't think people realize that that's being the city's money that's being spent. I think it's kind of an understanding that it's all a grant thing at this point. That's what I even thought. So that's another upsetting thing to me personally about this project. But I thought we had already talked about having the two different concepts, and I would like to see the two different concepts. And again, that would be my personal choice.
My conversations now, granted, I'm not talking to businesses downtown, but there was the assumption it was all city money. So different crowd, different assumptions. But I am in agreement with you that I would like to proceed with the two separate concepts.
I would.
Amy?
Yeah, I think so too. I think getting as much, you know, community engagement as we can it's a pretty big issue for. I kind of love that this is our big issue. I'm not gonna lie. Like, really, this is the big thing that we're all like worried about. That's pretty awesome. But still, it is. So I I agree. Like, if we can get as much information out there, it might slow things down a little bit, but.
I'm gonna disagree. I have a hard time spending twenty thousand more dollars when, I mean, I understand that some of this is new for the new council members. But these are things that we've been discussing for a long time. We've spent a lot of time going out to the public. We've spent, Kelly spent a lot of time going out and talking to business owners. And when I showed up for the last meeting, I really thought it was going to be like a fifty one forty nine kind of split, and it really wasn't. I mean, the public, we had an astronomical amount of people respond to the survey. And and it was really definitive that they wanted to see it closed and that they, one, they were concerned about the parking. And since Sam has addressed the parking, it seems like the will of the people is to close it. And I'm reticent to spend extra money for an extra concept that is going to take more time and drag this out when we've already spent quite a bit of time on it.
One unfortunate thing that we found out about the survey is that people could take it over and over and over and over again.
Actually, they they paired that out, IP addresses.
Here's how that went.
So so any similar IP addresses that were used, which means you're taking it from any of your like the same device, or if you're signed into your Google, you know, or whatever. So they pulled all that out so that.
Oh, they were able to do that.
So those are results.
Prior to when it was presented to us. Oh, that's good to know. Because that was kind of troublesome when we.
We were worried that, like we are with our community survey, any, any survey. So the one thing I failed to mention, the design workshop had asked us to pass on was just simply a reminder, because when they came back with the costs that from their survey, from the survey results, ten percent said they would want to see a flexible design. I think it was close to twenty percent said, don't close it at all. And over sixty percent saying, you know, close it and do a permanent. So I think there, the reason why they brought that up does, I think it's worth, it's worth considering because you have less people asking for a like a partial one lane or flexible than you even had saying have a or or, you know, open it back up, right, as a road. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that if, whether it's one or two, we're still going back to the, there's still the opportunity to go back to the public. And the one isn't just, here's one design. It's it's okay, because we got a lot of feedback, right? There's a lot of different amenities that could be there. There's a lot of different ways to lay it out. There's a lot of, and and those are going to be lots of options if you do one or the other even. So.
Janine?
Yeah, um, I lean towards what Heather's saying. I think at our workshop discussion, it sounded, I mean, I felt like we were all in a very like, you know, listen to each other well, and that the parking was the thing we really wanted to double check into, which is why we even weren't looking at the flexible. And so because that sounds like it's addressed and because of the overwhelming on results from the survey as well as the focus groups and all of the prior discussions before you know, three of us joined the council. To me, I would rather not spend the extra twenty thousand as well. Just as Heather said, I think it's pretty compelling what the public is suggesting they want us to do. And I find that a direction. I feel like that's something we've been given direction to do. So that's my stance on it.
All right. Well, I'm still hearing three for spending it and two for not spending it.
We're not hearing from Ken though.
But that's, well, you're not here. That's, you're here, you're making decisions. If you're not here, you're not making decisions. So the council that's here are the ones that are making that decision tonight.
So do we make a motion to move forward with two concepts and then see how that goes?
Do you need a motion? Or is it just a staff direction?
I'd like a motion.
You'd like a motion? Okay.
Put a motion that we go forward with two concept designs as we asked for previously in the workshop.
I'm curious what you're gonna say.
I wanted to see the seconds that can be discussed.
Oh, if I second it, we can discuss. Okay, then I'll second.
Okay. So it was ten. Can you go over those numbers again? It was ten percent said they were interested in a flexible, twenty percent said, don't close it. And then there were sixty percent that said, close it.
Yeah, it was sixty something. I don't remember.
Okay.
I thought it was like sixty three.
Yeah, I think.
Heather, thank you for bringing up that point.
It's weird to me that, I mean, not that it's scientific, but there was also one that was done in the, I mean, I hate to bring up Facebook, but Facebook did do one on the community, fruit of community page, and it was extremely not like that whatsoever. And those are, every person only got one vote. It was a little thing where you hit a little, a little vote which way there was three hundred that, and it was just straight. Do you want it open? Do you want it closed? Three hundred different people said they wanted it open. There was seventy five people that said they wanted it closed.
Well, but it's kind of like.
Then that, and then I heard about the other one being able to be just over and over. So I was like, wow, okay, maybe it isn't the same, but.
But James, this company does these things professionally all the time.
I get it. I get it.
It was very. Being there in city council today. It's kind of like Ken not being there in city council today, so he doesn't get a vote. If all those people who voted on Facebook didn't fill out the cert, the city survey, the city survey is the one that counts.
Yeah, totally.
Vote on that one, and then they, you know, it didn't count. The, I'm not gonna put a whole lot of credence in a Facebook survey. I want professionals who do this kind of data analysis all of the time. And I, I don't care. I really don't have a stake in this street at all. Open it, close it. I don't personally care at all. I really thought it was going to be more tied and I was amazed and I, and kind of like Janine says, I feel like, it feels, it feels like when it was that definitive and we had like fifteen hundred people that responded, which normally, you know, I've given a lot of surveys before and you're, you're lucky if you get forty, fifty percent, you know, kind of things. And I think the the consultant said that they were hoping to get five hundred people who actually filled out the survey. So three times the amount of people voted. And and over sixty percent wanted to see it closed. That's, that's our community talking to us. And whatever our personal feelings are, needs to be set aside because we're here to do the work of the community.
Now, I totally agree with that. I was just pointing out some other information that that I myself saw. I just, I just felt like the survey was very skewed and I felt like it was very pushed towards a certain demographic. And it just seemed like it went that way. So and that's just my feeling on the project.
Well, but how could it be pushed toward a certain demographic if it went out to all citizens?
I'm downtown all day, every day. And believe me, the people that were being talked to about putting in their answers were very specific, certain amount of people. And it's okay, it is what it is. And if people that wanted to fight it, they needed to step up and do it. But it was very heavily pushed right in that little specific circle. But again, I would really just like to see two different concepts moving forward. If we're gonna spend this much of our money on it, it'd be nice to see what the options really are.
All right. Any other discussion before we call for a vote? All right. Dad, would you please poll council?
Counselor Miller?
What are we? I'm sorry.
So the motion was to have two concept plans and it's spending the extra twenty thousand to get the extra drawings.
I'm gonna say no. I'm gonna save the money.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
Counselor Bremen?
It's on what Heather brought up. I'm voting no as well.
Counselor Perser?
No.
Sir Williams?
Yes.
All right. Motion does not pass.
Does not pass.
So can I put forth another motion?
Yes.
I move that we move forward with the one design for permanent closure.
Second.
Any discussion?
Taking into consideration that, you know, parking should be a feasible option. Because that, to me, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the biggest concern.
Thanks for doing that too, Sam. I really appreciate that.
Staff did that.
Thank you, staff.
That was the main concern. I still am very concerned with the, with the traffic behind the other side of it and with the use of the alley becoming a road in the parking lot behind SUDS, but that hopefully will address that when they do the plan.
All right. All right, Dad, would you please poll council?
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
No.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
All right. You have direction now?
Yeah, thank you. That, that's one less city manager update later, I guess. Plan on bringing it up now, but when that came up, I will say.
We'll be out twenty minutes earlier.
While we're, while we're on it, tomorrow, staff are going around to walk and kind of take, take a first stab at identifying areas for public parking signage. And we're working with the police department Public Works on how to do educational pieces for larger vehicles, like to try and direct them to this parking lot. Trying to, it's one thing to just do it, but we're also trying to consider what, how it can be enforced and and in the wording that we put out. So that's starting. I just wanted to let you all know that because signage has been, that's, that's the easiest thing we can get going. So we're, we're starting that process.
The one other question, when we were talking about Shannon had the other one about the north, what is it? Not, is it Mulberry Mesa? Or South Mesa? That's gonna add how many parking spots? I know we were thinking, I mean, that's quite a few.
It's only a couple.
Is that only a couple with the angle?
It's not a lot.
All right. I thought, yeah, I thought it was gonna add more than that because of the angled parking compared to.
Most of it is already.
Right.
Right. And then you've got you got, what was Vern's place? The Center Town Liquor, you know, that's actually private. That's going away, thankfully, that he sold because that was, that was a bone of contention because he felt like his business was suffering or would if he didn't have his own parking. But now that the thrift store owns that property, then we should be good to go as far as doing what we want to do.
Okay. All right.
We'll continue the.
First three slides are easy. What else? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Joe, Sam, can I just say this before Shannon's presentation went a little faster than yours? And he's not here to enjoy that.
There were two motions that were.
Well, you can continue now. Thank you.
I was gonna try to. So the next project is the sixteen road rail crossing. This is one that's been around for a while, working with the railroad. We got some higher estimates recently out of the railroad in order to make this a project. What what's going on is there are two crossings. One is the spur that goes to IIG. The other is the main track. It's very narrow. The asphalt's torn up. The southern crossing is wooden panels and they're very rough. And they're not as wide. So the pavement leading in and leading out is thirty six feet. What we are planning to do is add a panel both on the west and east side, replace the wooden ones with both or with concrete and then come in there and pave. Now that work, with exception of the paving, is done by Union Pacific Railroad. So we have given them the go ahead to proceed when they can schedule that. It's not just like they show up next.
They're out there right now. What are you talking?
Well, I know. They are a different crew. But anyway, th- this project has a fifty thousand dollar federal mineral lease district grant that we're getting a extension on that's helping pay for this as long and as well as some transportation impact fees from Frank Henry and and people down in the industrial park. So the Maple Street improvements, this was a project that was scheduled for this year. It was the continuation of Phase One, Two. This would be Phase Three of Maple Street where we replace the sewer that is clay. And then we go ahead and overlay the street, which is in a little need of love. With the Highway Six emergency sewer, we decided to. With the Highway six emergency sewer, we decided to postpone this project for a subsequent year because of fund balance in the sewer fund. Our 2022 overlays, they started, you've probably seen some milling out there. They started milling May 30th through the third of June. The asphalt is coming in on the 12th and 13th of this month and they should be able to finish that up in a couple of days. There could be some manhole and valve adjustments, but as far as the asphalt getting put down, and I know that North Mesa is kind of getting beat up if anybody travels north of Ottley, which I do, but.
I think the manhole covers, is that one of the thing they're addressing?
Well, so i- in the intersection itself, as far as.
Oh, you're talking North Maple, right? Or Mesa? Oh, never mind. I'm on the wrong one. North Maple has a couple manhole covers that are, it's sunk around.
They're low or high.
Because I've heard complaints on it. Yeah, they're.
Further north, right?
Yep.
I've seen that.
No, I've felt that.
I have too. And the one in front of City Market. So the Pine Street Bridge is a project that started last year. We got the design completed by SGM. This was a design build project. GA Western is the contractor on this one. We've got the right of way secured. At this point, we're trying to schedule utility relocates for high pressure gas, gas, water, phone cable, all those, so that we can demo the bridge and do our work. So that's probably going to be a five to seven months from the time that we get going. And we're starting November 1 or right after irrigation water gets shut off. There's a, there's an irrigation line that runs on the bridge and serves Little Salt Wash Park. And so we're going to have to have bypass or something like that. So it just made more sense to wait a little bit, give the guys time to relocate their facilities and then construct the bridge. We did the, or we're in the 90% phase of the Fremont Street design at Highway six. This year, we've slated money to acquire the right of way to construct that. And we, we have about $300,000 currently that CDOT is willing to partake with or whatever. And that's going to cause federal funding and we, we don't know what kind of funding we're going to get on this project. So we're acquiring the right of way through CDOT's process, which would not prevent us from using federal funding down the road. If we, if we went and did it in a shorter duration and didn't follow their rules, which is the Uniform Act, then we would not be able to use federal funding down the road. So we've got $410,000 slated for right of way acquisition for that project. And that goes up to Wildcat Avenue from Highway six.
Just out of curiosity of a $300,000, is CDOT charging a percentage to manage that fee?
Or that? They won't be managing the project. They, God, I think it's, if they manage your construction project, it's a flat fee. And I want to say it's like 22% of the construction cost. And so we managed the Coacapelli Trail and it's a lot of paperwork. I mean, you're, you do more paperwork than you do construction. And so we were thinking, why would we want to do this again? But when you see what the cost is, if they manage it for you, it doesn't.
22%.
Yeah, that's pretty high. I mean, if you're talking about a $4 million project, right, that's $800,000 or eight. Yeah.
Good. So we're managing it.
Right. The Maple Street Bridge is one that was designed in 2017. It was slated for construction possibly this year if we were able to get grant funding. We haven't been able to find that. Shannon's working on it right now. I think he's sending one out here in about five minutes. But that's, that's another one that is a $2 million project. We had a fatality on that bridge. At this point, it's probably been close to 10 years. I think it happened before I started working here and I've been here over a seven years. So it kind of flies by.
That one, the state does have a, a grant program. The, the challenge is there are, there's a long list of bridges that meet the criteria across the state. And they, their funding is minimal. I mean, i- you might get a couple of bridges in there. And so e- it's a very difficult one to ever get because there's, there's a, they, they look at the criteria. Everybody has a score and there's always a massive list of people with much lower scores across the state. We did submit this, as Shannon mentioned, to the senators offices. So I mean, it would be awesome if Senator Bennett's office, you know, came back with, with this project. But this is one that we, you know, we could find ourselves having to use fund balance to replace in the future, which we've been building up for, for certain projects, but we got to get through Pine first. We can't do them both at the same time. So we've got a little more time than we had originally planned with Pine being delayed about a year.
Yeah, we also have to get the right of way on this particular project. And the same group that's getting the right of way on Fremont Street is under contract to go through the process on this bridge as well.
And this bridge, Mesa County actually designed it, right?
Mesa County hired Dowell Engineering to, out of Montrose to design it. Yeah.
Now, do they do any matching funding for this bridge or will they do any matching Mesa County? Just because it's in the city. Is that a possibility?
It's, it's always a possibility to request, you know, as we go through our budget process. But we used to receive joint muni funds from the county, so they would give, they would give each of this, well, they would give, I don't know about Grand Junction, but they gave Palisade and Pruda a certain amount of money each year. And that went away three years ago, I believe, maybe four.
Well, yeah.
And that used to help. I mean, we used to get 100 or 200,000 tours. I mean, I want to build a bridge, of course, but, but we, we were planning on requesting, see if that could start back up. It went away when, I can't remember what was going on, but times were looking a little different for them in the future, but revenues have gone up since. So we could ask.
That's all I'm asking.
The Peach Way Drainage Project that's up there north of the middle school, Peach up and around the corner. And I guess up against the north end of LDS property, there was historic ponding of water up in that area. And so we did a small project in May after they got completed with the Highway six sewer, were the low bidder on this project and got some drainage up there that ties all the way back to Ottley. And then the Peach Way over there on the far east side was not paved and that got paved as part of the project. So we have the Civic Center remodel and no one noticed the holes in the sheet rock in the back of the room. So that was pretty good. The, we've got some conceptual stuff, layouts from Chamberlain Associates. Were in the process of sending out RFP for a CMGC for the contractor to be involved with the cost estimating and kind of given direction on what can be developed and what can't be built, you know, so that you don't get to a certain point and then, hey, that's going to be a lot more expensive than what this product over here could be. So we're slated to have construction drawings late fall and that's a $1.3 million project. We're kind of in desperate mode of some office space, so.
Well, my question on that is with the way, the volatility of the construction and supplies and materials, is that budget number going to be accurate?
Well, I mean, that's time to tell, right? You're, we don't know what the construction costs are going to be in six months or whatever. So I don't have that crystal bar. Like, that's what you're asking.
Well, I'm just, I just know everybody's gone up 10 to 30%. So I mean, it's, when we started looking at that, we budgeted that almost a year ago. So that number can be drastically different.
Well, I think what happens is as you go through the process and you're getting those numbers locked down, you start doing some value engineering on your project, right? And so that there may be some things that you really want that aren't going to be in the, in the project. There may be a room that, hey, we were planning on redoing the break room, but the break room stays the same kind of thing, more public spaces and, you know, the, the working spaces. So that, I think that's how we would handle it.
Okay.
Isn't, isn't the process, I mean, it is a guaranteed maximum rate at the end?
It is.
When, when we get to that point.
But you have to get to that point. You're not going to get that point.
No.
When they first get under contract, it's going to be as you get to, hey, we have a lot of things ironed down. We don't have final drawings, but we have a list of units, you know, there's how many doors, is it how many, what you call it? And that's how we're going to get to a total price.
All right. And when, when does construction plan to start?
So it would be. It, it would go out to bid right after that late fall. So it could be, you know, winter slash first of the year.
Okay.
So there's Highway 340 trail design. We had $90,000 left over from the Coacapelli Trail that we're going to send out an RFP here in the next month or so to get designs for the continuation of what I would call the Red Cliffs or the 340 trail, however you want to call it. There's a concrete trail on the east side of 340 that terminates at Red Cliffs. Our intention is to get the design to send that down to the south, up underneath the 340 bridge and then connect in with the State Parks Trail so that that is your mechanism for getting from one side of 340 to the other, if you don't want to go over the overpass and you don't want to go through the gravel of, of the lagoon property.
Just a reminder that the 90,000 is One Riverfront money that they gave us for the Coacapelli section that did not have to be spent because we were able to get about $4 million in grants from three agencies. They had given us, I think, about double that amount that helped us get the first grant, but then we were successful with others. So we, we had to give the money back, but when we went to, before we did that and presented to the One Riverfront Foundation, they asked us to keep it if we would utilize it for a design of a connection under 340. So that, that's, that's where that's stemming from, the funds. So it's fully, I guess, fully grant funded on, on the design.
Sam, can, sorry, I, I don't know where, I mean, is that other, is the gravel part of 340 what goes into McKenna's?
Oh, no.
Well, they're saying from the lagoon property, I think, is what you were saying, the, the, from the roundabout that goes back into lagoon property by La Quinta.
Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Raptor Road.
Got it. Thanks.
So we also have some bike park improvements. Single Tracks is under contract for $50,000 to put in some new armored features. They are scheduled to put that in, in the fall of this year. And so a lot of those facilities that were just soil have kind of eroded and it takes more maintenance. These are going to have either steel or, or wooden armoring so that the maintenance or the shape stays for, for longer and the maintenance goes down.
With that project, Mark was able to work with single track trails on, we have a lot of extra dirt that, that we've taken in at the lagoon property. We filled one of the ponds, which was the plan. We thought that would take forever and it happened and we have a lot of extra. So by, by letting them utilize some of the dirt to bring in, so they'll, they'll actually kind of, it'll, it'll look like the bike park's going away. Like they'll flatten it and then they'll rebuild it up and then they'll put these features. And we're getting a project that would cost about, it was either, it was between 100,000 and 125,000 because they're going to utilize our park as a, as a place where they showcase all the features. And, and then because that dirt was able to be provided. So essentially when we budgeted and we went through the budget process last year, you know, we had three proposals. There was a 30,000, a 50,000 and an 80,000. And in working through all of that, we're getting essentially over $100,000 product for, for 50,000. So, so that seemed to really work out well. They'll have a few where those features could rotate as well. So there could be an area where over time, you know, they, they come out with a new feature and they rotate. They sell the, one of the showcase and put it back, but there's always something rotating there. And then there's different skill levels throughout. So it'll be a, a much improved bike park that takes less maintenance than what happens now. It's a constant, which is either volunteers or so we, it's hard to keep up with when it's all dirt. So you, you've probably seen some of those in other communities where there's the mixture that can really help.
I know a lot of kids that are excited about this.
I know some adults too.
Right.
That's where I got my concussion. So I'm, I'm going to be careful there in the future.
Big kids too.
Another project that was completed this year by Public Works was piping the paperway ditch. It was a irrigation ditch that was open and so it just wasted water. So we went in there or Public Works went in there and piped it through the ditch, put about a valve on it. So now it kind of helps our system maintain pressure and we can go in there and flush it occasionally to get the sediment out of there. But that was completed for, for parts for $5,000. I didn't include the labor. I didn't want to waste another slide and ask for questions, so that was.
Have you had enough questions so far tonight?
I am more than willing to entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Sam before we move on to the, the quicker presentation after? Thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
All right. Our second part of our administrative agenda is we've got an overview of the wastewater reclamation facility by our Public Works Director, Kimberly Bullen. First question, do you need us to vote on anything? All right.
I'm going to make this very brief for all of you. So maybe if I can find my presentation.
Ah, she wasn't prepared.
Was, and then my computer shut off. So that's why I interrupted Sam's presentation.
I thought that was your way, your private code of saying, hey, you better hurry up. I thought, I thought she said it was going to be quick. Well, while we're waiting, can I ask the question to council? So did Matthew do okay? Getting the meeting started?
He did just fine.
You got one thing on the agenda. All right. You're good. We're trying to break even slowly because July 16th, I won't be here. So, or that next meeting, whatever, the 19th, I think it is. So.
Tonight, I don't know if you know, I was taking notes like, oh, wait, that's the order he does it.
I think it's him.
I don't have the years of experience that some people do.
Takes a lot of listening and just, I don't care what you do when you run your first one, it's, you forget stuff. But don't worry, staff reminds you and.
Reminded them.
I think it was Heather first that spoke.
They were aggressively helpful. Yeah.
Any chance I get to correct Matthew's fun?
Mr. Mayor, Council members, Kimberly Bullen, Public Works Director. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the wastewater reclamation facility and the, and the collection system. You'll hear more about this as we start into the budget process. A few of the council members were able to take part in the tour of the web, of the reclamation facility tonight. So thank you for going along with that.
Having you.
Uh, this, they've seen this picture. They saw it on the tour, but this is an overview of our wastewater reclamation facility. This was a facility that was constructed in 2011, financed with a Water Resource and Power Development Authority grant loan for 21.8 million. We had some other grants and then used fund balance from the city's wastewater enterprise fund. We currently have a state of Colorado discharge permit, which allows us to discharge the effluent into the Colorado River. This permit is good for five years. It will expire in 2025. We, we typically will reapply for the permit about 180 days prior. We, we typically will reapply for the permit about a hundred and eighty days prior to the expiration. Um, the current plant is designed for two point three three million gallons a day is the plant capacity. And so we are just under half of the capacity of the plant. And depending on the day, that can go up or down. Today it was actually one point zero zero two, uh, million gallons. But that puts us at eighty six percent capacity of one of our ditches. And so you'll hear in probably future budget conversations about when we need to turn on the second ditch. So we currently have two ditches, um, which you can see they're the oval shaped, um, on the diagram here. So when we talk about that, you'll, you'll understand that it's actually turning on a second ditch. We're still well within our capacity of the plant, but when we turn on that second ditch, we have some constraints with regards to our aeration system. Also, and I, we have significant amount of time. I, I can't give you an exact amount of time, but when we are at eighty percent of our plant, uh, capacity, we have to be in design of the expansion of the treatment plant. When we reach ninety five percent of our capacity, then we have to be under construction and those are governed by CDPH and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. So we're always watching about how fast we grow and, and the impacts of the plant, but, um, we have some time. Um, back when the plant was, was built, um, and this was prior to my time here at Fruta, we did a cost of service study. It was completed by a financial consultant that really looked at developing sewer service rate structures using a common practice. And it, to the extent possible that we would provide for the economic development of the community while ensuring equity among the rate payers as we, as we grew. In twenty eighteen, the city also completed a rate study. So this was also designed to provide, how much did our rates need to be to provide sufficient revenues to meet our ongoing operation and maintenance of the plant as well as the capital infrastructure that was needed, um, as the plant ages. The forecast period for this study was two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three, so a five-year period. We're approaching the end of that rate study, um, forecast period. What came out of that study was a two percent increase in rates each year for the last five years. Um, I believe in twenty twenty, we did not raise the rates because of COVID. We were sensitive to the impacts of the community. But we did come back this, this year and we raised the rates by a four percent. So we were still making up that difference of what the rate study was saying we needed, needed to do. Um, as part of our state permit, we also are required to do some special permit studies. And those that were on the tour, we talked a little bit about that. We have an inflow infiltration report that we have to submit updates annually for, I, I believe it's a four-year period. Basically, we have to identify what sewer lines we replace, uh, what, how many sewer lines we add to the system. But basically we're trying to cut down on the amount of inflow and infiltration that's occurring in our sewer system, which impacts the flows at the plant. We also have to do a pollutant source identification study. Again, we have to do an annual report that identifies how we are mitigating or developing strategies to deal with potential pollutant sources in our, in our wastewater. And then the final one is a monitoring report for discharge temperature. So we're, we're testing the temperature at the river of our affluent into the Colorado River. Um, and we're gauging as to how well we're keeping within temperature ranges that the state's designated for us. Um, we use our engineering firm Tetra Tech, which is a engineering firm designed for water wastewater systems. And so they help us develop these reports and we collect the data and then they submit the report on our behalf. Um, as we talked about anticipated growth and the impacts on the wastewater plant, in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, we estimated that we could handle five thousand four hundred and fifty taps with our current ditch operating, give or take about a fifteen percent, uh, contingency. Currently, we show we've got a little over five thousand residents, uh, currently on the system. And so then based on the amount of growth that we see over the years, um, we had about eighty-four taps, I think, that we added last year. Basically that cuts down the amount of time we have before we have to turn on that second ditch. So we anticipate that about one point eight years that we have before we have to have the design of the aeration system that sits in the bottom of the second ditch, designed and constructed in order to turn that second ditch on.
Ask a quick question. So we didn't design that with the first ditch or you didn't need to do the design?
So because we had the second ditch, if we had to do any maintenance on that aeration system, we could always just, um, turn the flows on to that other ditch, do the maintenance. But because it's a, it's a submersible system, when you have both ditches running, we've got no way to turn off a ditch to do the maintenance repair. So last year we did, uh, complete thirty percent design of that aeration system. So we just need to keep progressing into the sixty, ninety percent design and be ready for construction.
Okay.
Uh, in two thousand and ten, the city completed a needs assessment update, which gave some great information as to the needs of the wastewater plant for the next ten years. And to the credit of the city, they've accomplished a number of those things that were identified in the needs assessment. Last year, we went ahead and did a updated, uh, assessment based on the information of what we've completed and what remains and any new items that have come forward. Um, as I mentioned, we're thirty percent designed for the aeration system. And then we have, um, two projects that aren't, weren't in Sam's capital project because they're designated strictly for the sewer fund. One is our H two S mitigation project and the other one is called a sludge vortex project. I will tell you that Terry is very excited about the sludge vortex project. It's kind of a cutting edge project that is going to help with the phosphorus removal that we're going to be required to do, which this plant was never really built to do that removal. Um, and then it also helps with some of the filament bacteria that forms at the wastewater plant. Um, he believes that that will help resolve some of those situations. Uh, these, this is just a list of some of the projects were identified in the two thousand and twenty-one needs assessment. You can see that they're spread out over the next, what is that? Six years, um, but at a cost of four point seven million dollars. So nothing is cheap out at the wastewater reclamation facility. But we'll, you know, we continue to try to make efficiencies and, and move forward with implementing some of the, the improvements. Um, from the collection system, uh, so we switched to the, to the pipe in the, in the ground, right? So again, collection system is really responsible for helping control the in, inflow and infiltration by taking care of the sewer lines that are in the system. We camera the lines, we jet the lines, we clean them. We, we base it on age, the material type, the condition of the pipe. And that helps us then work with engineering and others to prioritize which lines get replaced. We, we will typically try to do those in conjunction if we have road improvement projects. So we're not digging that road up twice, especially after you've just put down a nice new road. Um, we are responsible for about seventy-five miles of collection system. So, uh, this year has been a challenge for us because of some staffing issues. We had a, an employee injured at the end of last year and he's not back to work fully. Um, and so we're, we're trying to get as much done as we can with the staffing we have, but it, it has been a challenge this year. Our goal is to clean about, um, a third of the collection system. I would say we're probably close to about a quarter of the system for this year. Um, we have also developed and analyzed alternatives for our H two S problem that we have had in the city. We believe that the emergency sewer line was a result of H two S in the line that has helped deteriorate the concrete. So we actually have a, a pending grant application with Department of Local Affairs for six hundred thousand. Uh, we feel confident that, uh, we'll get some funding for that. But that is to basically put in a biofilter, uh, system that's going to treat the foul odor at the plant. And then we will replace seventeen manholes along the, the line that feeds to the plant. So it's going to be a big project, but, um, we're excited to get that going. And then we've also developed some best management practice, again, in conjunction with our engineering firm on the grease issue that we have in the city of Fruta, which is just, you get a lot of grease in the, in your system. On a weekly basis, we are pumping out with our back truck, the I seventy lift station and hauling that to the, to the wastewater reclamation facility. So we've actually gone out and we've implemented a questionnaire for businesses to talk to us about how are they set up with current, uh, fixtures in their building? Do they have grease traps? Do they have grease interceptors? Best management practices for how to manage grease in a restaurant. Um, and we're going to continue to work through that program with our local businesses. This is just a quick, uh, map showing our, uh, sewer system or collection system. The good news is everything in green is PVC pipe, which is not susceptible to the H two S. So the bad news is a lot of our older lines that are clay, concrete, um, ductile, iron, orange bird is really located down in that core area of the city of Fruta. So that is our focus is to really look at those, those lines for replacement. Um, and there's different mechanisms for fixing those lines. So we'll explore those alternatives. Um, this was just a, again, just a brief overview of the H two S project. The picture is worth a thousand words because you can see the corrosiveness of the H two S on concrete. Our biggest concern is that we would, um, potentially have a manhole that would collapse based on the deterioration of the structure. So, um, again, we're excited to get that project going. And now there's questions.
See that, Sam? She's got a slide for that. She's done this before. Anybody have any questions for Kimberly?
Sort of like along the lines of sidewalk, if your house does have a problem with the sewage line, but it, is, is that a city issue? Is it a home, like, who handles that?
It's typically a homeowner's issue. Um, when it ties into our line is when we'll get involved, we'll come out. But our folks are really good about fielding questions from folks and offering, you know, any ideas that we have in terms of helping them mitigate that problem. Uh, there was an issue, there's been an issue on, um, Aspen Street with a few businesses. They've all worked great with each other. Um, and we've been communicating pretty frequently with them and, and just trying to help them troubleshoot what the issues are. But I think they're on a good path forward and getting the, the issue resolved.
Great.
Matthew, looks like he has a question.
I think I've seen something in communications before about household with grease disposal. I mean, you, you're talking to businesses. Is there any idea of like what percentage of it is comes from homes versus businesses?
We, we don't really have any way of knowing that, but we do know that when COVID hit and it shut down a lot of our restaurants, the grease issue dropped dramatically for the collection system. So we, we do believe that a lot of it is coming from the restaurants.
And I haven't paid attention to this for about six years, but, um, about six years ago, there was talk about a zero discharge law from the EPA coming through. Is that weird? It's ugly head again?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Good. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Heather?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Do you have a comment though? After our, um, our tour, I do have to say I am very reassured. We are in amazing hands as far as this is concerned. Like the, the people that are handling our wastewater are passionate about it and innovative. And, uh, man, it was really reassuring to, to see. So, yeah, thank you for showing us that.
All right. Well, thank you. That's how it's done, Sam. All right. Next, we're moving into our city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Today we, we, we spent some time with, there's a youth group, uh, called the Preserve America Youth Summit, and they're here for the week. There's about almost fifty, almost fifty kids, uh, with this group. And there's a couple from our area, but mostly from the Denver area. So today we, we got access to and they toured. It's, it's all about historic preservation and we, they toured the, uh, Fruta, Old Fruta Bridge. And then, uh, tomorrow, Mark Mancuso will be working with them on a couple, couple pieces related to open space and, and coordination with public lands agencies. And then I'll be spending time with them tomorrow night, um, fielding questions at, at the community center. So, um, we, we're, just, we're pretty involved with them. I know they're going to be at the, the Cavalcade, provided space for them for one of their events tomorrow where they'll hear from different speakers. They have a, a schedule of, you know, probably ten things per day. So they're, they're pretty busy. And then, not to take your update, but I did get, we did get some information on those meetings. So do you want me to just cover that, Mayor? Okay. So, uh, today was the, the scheduled hearing for the Mason County Marijuana Cultivation, Manufacturing and Testing, uh, ordinance. Uh, Mayor Kincaid went, as, as you all discussed in a, a previous workshop. They, if you remember, our request was to continue, they did continue it, um, to the twenty eighth of June. And they will have a community workshop on the twenty second. So that'll be something as we watch for the, um, the, the agenda for that, that might be something that we want to, uh, try to be at or make sure we're, you know, we have representation uh, for, they have an internal briefing on the ninth, but it's a community workshop on the twenty second. We'll watch for what that, uh, agenda is. And then again, their hearing was rescheduled from today till the twenty eighth. So I think they've heard from more than just us at this point in time. Palisades been, uh, uh, expressing a number of comments and a number of residents and even, uh, people in the development community. So quick update on that and that's all, that's all.
Twenty second, do they have a time on that?
Aren't we?
That's.
Yeah.
Right. So that's on a Wednesday.
A lot of us are going to be gone.
Right. Well, that's why I mean, so I mean, I think I'll, I'll be here. So I don't know who else will, but.
Yeah. It's not, they don't have a time set yet.
Okay. I guess what you guys keep us updated and we'll, I'll make sure I'm at least there.
That's all.
That's all, that's all. All right. That's all my report was too. So, all right, we're, with that, we're going to move into council reports and actions. We'll start over here with Amy.
Hi. Just the historic preservation, um, meeting, the big topic was Fall Festival. Um, preparing for the history fair that they put on during Fall Festival. Um, they were going to check with Janine to make sure that it was still okay to use the cavalcade space. Um, they're looking for some, uh, more display items, more like, I don't know, tactile items rather than just like paper and pictures and things. So, um, that was an issue. And then, uh, they also are talking about doing a, a float in the parade. So putting that together too. Yeah. And I think that's everything.
All right. Thank you. Heather?
Parks and Rec, you already heard everything, uh, because it was in the Capitol Project, um, presentation. I missed the arts and culture board because they changed the date and then they changed the date back and I had already scheduled other things. So, but I'm meeting with Nancy Patterson next week for coffee and she's going to get me updated.
All right. Thank you. James?
My tourism meeting was moved, so we didn't have that and.
All right, Janine?
Uh, the livability meeting really focused a lot on, um, what they presented to us, um, the other, at our last meeting. Uh, but they did talk a lot about, um, engaging, like trying to figure out ways to engage with the youth and, um, be more in the public eye. So we talked about if they wanted a presence in the farmer's market, um, booth, maybe they could use the city, um, booth. Are we right? The city booth? And then Sarah talked about our radio spot, um, that the cities gets to have now on KFM and I think, am I summing it up? Okay. And then, um, we have our downtown advisory board meeting tomorrow.
All right. Matthew?
Gee, Jeff, seems like the same report for the past, uh, six months. Still interviewing, are still looking. Um, they are actually starting the interview process. I'm just going to say ditto, uh, for a bit. Um, the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, we have a board meeting tomorrow morning, but I did, uh, board training yesterday and they did a great job. Uh, and it was great to kind of see the schedule of all the events laid out on a yearly basis. So that's it.
Speaking about that, there is after hours for the Fruta Chamber Thursday at Timberline Bank. So from five thirty to seven thirty. So, I mean, we're, as a city, we've got passes to that. So if anybody wants to go to those.
They do it upstairs and then.
Yeah, that's not.
Or that's a really cool spot.
So, um, all right. Thank you. The only thing I had was what Mike already reported on it. So, uh, it was good to go to one of their public hearings. Cody Davis did say, hey, you made it to one of my meetings before I made it to yours. So I think, um, I know one of the things I've asked him is to come in and just kind of give us an update from the city, but we'll, we'll work that out too, uh, soon. So that is all I have. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Who all is going to the CML conference?
Yeah, we have five, five going. So Ken Cry, Amy Miller, James, Janine, and you.
I have to be.
Oh, okay.
That weekend, but I was going to try to hit the first part of it.
Okay.
Really gotten to dig into it yet.
I guess a better way, I, I know Joel and Heather.
Are not. There you go.
I was just sort of, I'm willing to drive somebody if they want a carpool.
Okay. Perfect. But do you have enough charging stations? Perfect. But do you have enough charging stations?
Yes, I do. I can do the rapid charge one on the way. Takes about twenty minutes to charge.
All right. Perfect. All right. With that, it is now nine eleven, nine eleven PM. We are going to adjourn.